What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at the hand history from Lewis. We with took first place in the four forty with a thousand runners on poker stars. But let's see, uh, we are gonna jump directly to the final table because that's what Lewis wants us to do. So here we are.
So it's like a stack distribution. We are the big stack with two medium stacks for immediate left and then two small stacks after that.
Right. What was that Ken?
Is this G G?
Oh, this is poker.
Poker stalls.
Okay, pretty deep.
So what do we think about this one here?
Um, I mean, the sizing is way too small, I think, like you, you need to make it at least like six, I would, I would think this deep. Like the micro three betting is good. The combo is kind of whatever. I'm not a big fan of the combo. Like you're gonna be targeting Queen X, right? Like, so you would rather have an ace, maybe a king?
Yeah, my, my thinking was that like, because of this seven and thirteen big blind, there's a lot of pressure on the middle stack. So then I can, and like, I feel like I don't need a big size in, in this situation because he really doesn't want to play a big pot against me.
Well, six, six big blinds out of position isn't a big size at all.
Yeah, I know, I just made it two and a half. Um, but this guy doesn't want to play a pot with me because I cover it and there's seven.
But he could just take a flop really easy here and not really lose too much and play in position.
Right, so like, you need to be, the, the idea is like, you gotta apply enough pressure to get him to fold. Like, you're still giving him a price where he can almost call with a need to profitably here. It's kind of the idea, but you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll go like, don't like the combo.
Well, the combo is bad, I think, just because like, uh, blockers matter a lot more in a final table scenario. So like, you are specifically targeting queens and jacks here.
If it was a six, King six suited, that would be, I think, really, really good. I think Queen six is a pip out of line. I've never really seen the I C M matrix going after it with the suited queens. What about you?
Yeah, sometimes.
I mean, it does sometimes.
To the queen.
Maybe, you can maybe find something like, I don't know, see if you can find a stack arrangement. It'll be easier for you to look on P F A.
Like, I just thought I'd like, because of the situation, I want to be free bet like a lot.
Well, you do. You're right about that. You're right about that. And you're targeting reasonable stacks also, like you don't want to be raising the shorties. You want to be raising the guys who have a lot to lose.
I mean, I'm in camp, I don't hate it. I just would like a bigger size.
Uh, that's where I am. I don't hate three betting the combo, but I think the size is just wrong. Like something close to six, even like five point eight or something.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I'm, I'm aboard with that. So there's probably some kind of final table arrangement. You just need like a big stack versus a medium stack. That looks like a good one right there. The sixty-four and like a thirty-four. So sixty-four in the small blind and then thirty-four opens.
There's like no really short stack there.
I guess that's true. That's true. That's true.
That's important. It needs to be.
This one maybe?
Maybe that's six big blind with the. Is there anyone like?
We need two shorts, right?
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
I mean.
This why I'm not studying I C M so hard. It's just getting.
Oh, uh, if you go one up.
There's.
For this one.
This one?
Yeah, that's fine. There's eighteen and a six.
So we are the small blind facing cutoff here. Cut off is thirty-six, small blind. We don't cover though.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta cover.
Thirty-two.
So small blind has to be big stack.
Yeah, with the big stack, the table, that's important too.
So what is the red color us or somebody else?
Red color is the short stack. The blue color is the big stack.
So that one, yeah.
This?
Yeah.
This would work.
Oh, wait.
No, the small.
Yeah, you could, you could be, wait, thirty-eight is the small.
Go down one, that one, right?
Yeah.
That is twelve in the small blind, right? No, I'm backwards.
Oh, you're right.
No, I'm right. Yeah, twelve's in the small blind. You guys are awful. And so the far right number is the chip average.
One up looks better, right? Thirty-eight in the small blind, twenty-two in the cutoff.
When you go up to where the big stack and the small blind.
When down this one?
Yeah, we're second.
Hey, Tim.
Big stack folded already.
Okay, yeah.
This, this would work thirty-eight and twenty-two. So you need the cutoff to open.
We are not the absolute big stack, but it's close. We're second in chips here.
Oh. Look at this.
Oh, look, I'm a teacher wizard.
And if we were actually the chip leader, it's probably even more higher frequency.
And what's the sizing?
Two point five eggs.
From an open.
The five and a half.
Which is, which is what I did, isn't it?
Five and a half, right? Or five, yeah. Five.
Hey, really surprising to see that it stretched all the way down to this.
I mean, like, we're also kind of, this is not the, you should really, like, I wouldn't nitpick combos. I would look for the overall range heuristic, like, it's not gonna be the exact same.
At fifty-four and then he's only got eighteen now.
This, yeah, you can look at it.
So it's kind of the same, right? It's more like suited ace, some suited kings. It digs a little bit into stupid queens, but in general, not really. Let's look at another one. Forty-two big blinds. No.
Yeah, look at the thirty-two open this time. Or the thirty-eight, either of them will work.
Well, these stacks are really close.
Yeah, we're like equal stacks.
Versus the hijack. Queen six is still a little bit of a thing here. All right, so I guess you find some slivers, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's, it looks like it's probably okay.
At this depth? Oh, you got punished though.
No, it's a full, you didn't lose shit.
Yeah. Oh, they're going spicy here. Oh, you get punished every time.
Yeah, this seems bad.
This is like, I assumed I wanted to be wide, but maybe this is too wide. Like, I, I want to, okay.
You widen your blockers, you open your aces wider, your kings wider, maybe some queens a little bit wider.
So I think Ken's. I think Ken's right, like you, you want to, um, the difference with the I C M stuff, like you do want to expand your range in a scenario, but you want to expand like blocker oriented stuff. This is probably like.
Okay with this though, if people are three betting a lot less than they should be, then you can get away with a lot.
Well, the problem is the big, the short stacks in the big line, so you want to block his re jams.
So the one thing I would also say about this is like, it's a four dollar tournament. Um, these players are probably playing similar ranges than what they're doing like the rest of the tournament. Like, I, I really doubt they're adjusting that much.
And then this is an easy reshock stack, no?
I mean, he still has heavy I C O on him because there's a guy with nine big blinds. I don't think it's so easy. Like, if you have ace or off, are you jamming?
Yes, definitely.
I don't think you should, I don't think you should be.
You don't think so?
Who's jamming?
If we open, what is the worst ace, the big blind jams?
Uh, I mean, I don't know.
I would say all of them, but not six, seven, maybe not a C. So you call a six, a seven, a safe, you jam every other ace. And.
I don't know.
Too tight.
Kind of this fashion here. Uh, here, here, here. So like big blind versus sorry, far from button.
Versus button, yes.
This is sixteen, right? So like it's close, right? It's not the buttons, not exactly the same stack depth, but this is in my mind what the, the strategy should look like. You have like six, seven, eight, or seven, eight, nine flat thing. You're jamming these, jamming these.
And this shows why we want to block aces there because he's mostly jamming his a six and some king X. So you want to expand your range with blockers to block those re jams.
So. Okay, we got punished. Oh, another spicy one, Lewis.
Yeah, this is, this is pretty wide, but I mean, it's honestly, it's probably fine, like.
He said he's never gonna salmon it.
This is a fine expansion, I think. Ace high board, I think it's a good C bet, or, yeah.
This is a spot where we could possibly size up a little bit.
I think we want to with I C M, we just want a bit smaller time.
Yeah, 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 why? His, his calling range, continuing range is gonna be inelastic, like a one big blind bet's gonna be as good as a three big blind bet.
Okay. I got it. Okay. Hmm, Lewis.
I don't like to recall, I like a raise or a fold.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, uh, raise is really attractive here because you could put this guy in the box. And, um, it's just a trashy hand, like you don't really want to take this. You want to take this down pre-flop or have to fold it.
Yeah, like, I'm not really sure, like, what the blind be blind strategy is and sort of I C M stuff, like, am I supposed to be like raising more than chippy B or limping a tongue?
Well, make your life easy.
Try to remember, there's always gonna be a portion of the range that like off suit four, off suit three, off suit loose. That is gonna be junk very often whatsoever.
Like if this was King four off, I'd raise it or Queen four or Jack four, but I don't know, ten four, I just decide to live.
I think.
King four actually.
But I think it's too good to just fold.
You should, Louis, show him some of those, those charts, man. There, there are some spots where you just raise a hundred percent of your range. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Those of the.
The fact that, the fact that he's in the middle. I mean, he's in the middle and there's short stacks, like he doesn't want to play a thirty-five big blind effective pot with you.
Yeah.
This one's gonna be closer to chippy V because the stacks are kind of close, so it's just gonna be a rise range, I think.
We have twenty more big ones and then we can get stacked and still be okay in the turn event.
A lot of limbs in the middle, a lot of raises from top and bottom.
Okay, so we need a circle here.
You could just go like six handed if you want to make your life easier. There's gonna be more attractive stack orientations there.
There. Yes, come on. So this one has a short stack. It's gonna be it, right?
This is, this guy's second in chips, so it, he may be a little more sticky, but.
All right, fine, from the small line. So this would be like big stack against big stack.
Mm hmm.
It's almost the case, right?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty close. There's a forty-four in there. That's, but yeah.
So this is a, a, a example of a model that you could use. So, yeah.
So it does raise the kings more. I thought they, I thought King four actually went more.
So like to give a really good example of like some, an extreme example, move up one where you have that forty-two and eighteen, like there's a, this is gonna be pretty extreme, like look at this range. So there's a six, a twelve, and this guy in the, the big blinds only got eighteen. So he's got a lot to hold on for and we can just like.
Put, put him to that, to the test, right? But at the same time, this square is already ever going all in, right? So you look, so like do some shenanigans, it's gonna be passive a little bit. So.
I think the short, uh, there, there's some, there's somewhere it just like the shorter you get, the more it just jams sometimes or the more extreme the, the I C M scenario is, but yeah, I mean, it's fine. You don't have to go too crazy.
I would rather fold here than limb.
I like raise over limp and then I like fold over limp.
Okay, we get this flop on this flop, should we bet one?
I do.
I, I would.
Like a, a club, a pair.
You just want to take it down here if you can.
That's what I try to do anyways.
Because now any turn is gonna be bad for us. This river is not bad, but I mean, we could have built a pot, right? Now you're going polar. I don't like this line at all. I think you should go one. Uh, after that turn, check, check. And then here, at least you're playing for five and I wouldn't go above eighty percent pot here because you're blind against blind, you're on I C M. So like when you do something like this, you're never gonna get paid.
I go like one and a half, get two pair, but there's straights on the board.
I would try to go like two point six, something like this.
Yeah, it's splitting hairs a little bit, but I mean, yeah, the, the idea is.
Yeah.
I C M will scale your sizes down in general.
That's a two loose.
Loose.
Way too loose.
Yep, yeah, this is, this is wide.
Oh. Lewis, what are you doing? Facing a tree there?
Well, no, no, look what happens. He shows, he shows.
Lewis, hang on.
He, he snapped folded.
You're tree betting in there? That has never tree bet in his life?
He only has fifteen hands.
Jesus Christ, Lewis, so that's, that's what's going on with you here.
Well, I got a blocker, right? And there's, and this guy's got pressure with the twelve and the eighteen. And with my ace, I block aces and ace king. And, and easy, even he's gonna find it hard to cool ace king because of the I C M pressure.
You think?
And then even like.
Hang on, Lewis, I just want to assess something. You think this guy's gonna have a hard time with ace king here?
I mean, watch what happens if you, he shows.
Okay, I, I mean, I mean, Lewis, in general, okay? I wouldn't expect any of my opponent to have a hard time with ace king here.
Neither.
So like, so an easy way to kind of sort this out, like as the buying goes down and the skill level of the pool kind of like, you know, is less. They're gonna make more mistakes in these high pressure situations with hands that they should probably be folding. So like as an adjustment, you should like be wary of, um, trying to get people to fold strong hands when they don't know better is kind of like what the, is what he's getting at.
I was thinking like, I prefer to full bet this combo than like jacks because it's got like equity if I'm up against like queens, jacks.
Well, jacks is not a good four bet at all because you don't have relevant blockers and like you're only isolating yourself against hands that are gonna beat you, right?
I agree.
Yeah, I think I, I do, I do play a bit aggressive in these spots, thinking people understand.
Which is fine, and that's good. Like, um, a natural aggressive tendency is definitely where you want to be and it's gonna make you money in the long run. You just have to, um, you need to adapt to the situations.
But, well, let me ask this.
If you're going to open and have a four blit bet bluff range, where is it going to pull from?
Suited aces.
Suited aces.
Your suited wheels.
Yeah, the exact same time.
There's a little bit of junky off and stuff like ace queen off.
Uh, Tim, this is a final table, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, that's why he was, that's what we were saying.
Now, I would not four bet bluff for ace queen off here.
What do you guys think of the open? I think the open's like you.
I was gonna say like.
The open is terrible, Lewis.
I'm really aggressive as a big stack at a final table and I'm never opening this.
Yeah, too loose.
Like I never opened this, like just not final table, like, or like not.
Well, Louis, you're, you're pulling from the right hands, honestly, like this is not a bad like expansion. If you wanted to be more aggressive in a scenario, it's, um, you just have to recognize that this is a bit wide and you're getting a little out of line and like.
This here is really out of line.
Well, this is like, like thi- this is good instinct, like you had the right reasons. You just pulled from the wrong combo, like if this was a six suited, I, I would like this play a lot more.
Eight, six, two, bill, maybe not, but ace five suited, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's splitting hairs, but yeah.
We can, ace five suited, you have like a great one.
Maybe the idea is you just want the additional equity, right?
Can we like look at a, like a chart for this spot?
Do you not trust us, Lewis?
Doesn't even know.
No, 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 I trust you. I just want to know, I want to know like what percent of hands it's four bet, like what percentage of the range.
If you're in, if you're doing this, you're way out of line because you're not even opening this hand. If you're forebetting this, you were so far down the chart, doing it way too much, right?
Well, no, I think Lewis has a question. Can I, should we approach or should we run it? Should we look at a chart?
It's up to you, man. Uh, you could probably find something that may have like some suited aces in it, like from this position. Like he is the big stack.
Gun one, uh, big stack versus second place.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I want to see how much, how, how am I supposed to play against the second place? Because it's a disaster for him to, to bust, so like.
So.
At the same time, it's a disaster for us to, when we're called.
Yeah, I want to, I just want to give the disclaimer that I always give when we look at these charts is like, it's gonna tell you to do some pretty wild stuff here in theory and like, if your opponents aren't making the proper folds and adjusting to how like the I C M of the scenario is, you're just gonna be absolutely torching money if you try to implement these charts.
You say, you say that and here, here is Lewis for betting all in.
Wait, wait, no, no, skip, 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 see what he bolted. He, he, he shows him bolts. Okay, go, go.
No, I, I don't want to show it. Yeah.
No, man, come on, show it.
We want to see Louis. You, we want to see him play down ace queen here. It's probably like queen.
I want to look at, do we not want to keep the suspense a little bit longer?
Okay, yeah, we can keep the suspense. We could keep.
Okay, so big stack against big stack, under again versus.
I jack.
So the circle has to be around here. Okay, I think this is.
Right there, fifty-four, forty-two, that's a good one.
And then versus tree bed, we open from E P and we are versus hijack.
Mm hmm. Yeah, this is a good one. Yeah, so it's just like taking all your suited aces. Now, this is, this is like suicide against some, some players. But, uh, like the, the motion is, you know, applying a lot of pressure because risk premium's high, you can't call.
See, Darren said a six suited, he was right, you know, he needs that extra bit of equity with the suited. If you wanted to get out of line with that absolute tumble, you got a sliver here.
But look, I, I, if you look at the raises, like I was actually quick to raise, like.
Yeah, I'm surprised with even in an open.
But that's what I was thinking. I thought the raise wasn't bad because I never raised it, but like if you look at it like a six, it's, it's, it's opening most of the time.
Yeah, it's fine. Honestly, like, I don't think it's a huge, I, like, that's why I was saying the raises, whatever. There's gonna be some scenarios where it's like, it's not gonna be opening this far wide.
I mean, I think, I think this is a function of the big blind having six big blinds, so no one can call.
Well, that, that's also, that's why I was saying, like, I wouldn't read too much into the exact combos, like just recognize that it's towards the end of the, towards the fringe of your range and you're good. Like, I, I don't think you're, you're like torching money opening this combo. I think like you have the right justification to open it.
Is there a different one we can look at? Because I think this one is really skewed because of the six big blind stack and the big blind specifically.
Sure, that, that forty-two, thirty-eight's good, Louis. There's a forty-two or the fifty-four, thirty-eight, there, there's a couple of.
This one?
The one right below it, we're, we're like second and third in chips. This one's pretty reasonable.
So.
Forty-two, uh, so E P and cutoff.
Is there a three bet jam?
No, 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 cut off here is.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, it's high, it, it, it's button. I'm sorry, button, button, button. Yeah, I screwed that up. So E P and button. So you see the same kind of heuristic pattern. Like.
Suited wheels are gonna be really strong to go after their three bets.
Yeah, they're the resilient combos of the bunch.
Yeah.
For sure. But like this scenario, like, okay, it's a smidge different and all of a sudden like we're not opening a seven or a six and like smidges of ace five this time. It's just these combos around the edges are really sensitive.
So I think for betting, yeah, opening is close. I think it's all online. Uh, for betting is definitely out of line. And then.
What did he fold? You gotta show me.
Queens.
It's gonna be a big hand. It's gotta be a big.
I doesn't show. He doesn't show.
Well, I remember i- in game, he instantly folded ace king off instantly.
Oh, okay. If he folded ace king off, that's like, that's too tight, probably. He's probably supposed to call that.
I agree, probably supposed to call you off with this.
And he didn't even think that, no time bank, just instantly melt.
Well, so what did you do? Did you give him a nit tag or something? How did you, how did you adjust?
I didn't, I didn't. I just assumed he like understood I C M, which can like help in stuff.
Wow.
Future.
Like, if that's the case, now it's time to pull out the four bet hammer on that guy.
You, you should. Okay, but. Deals to your opponents.
Let me, um, let me like make a controversial idea here. What if that's a bad theory play, but a correct exploit against the field who are only forbidding like queens plus, you know?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, there you go. Like, I mean, it works for this guy. The problem with that, though, I would say, Tim, is like, yeah, like, even if they're only forbidding like queens plus, what if they're still calling off with Jackson tins there and making that mistake? Like, I'm not really concerned about.
Like bluffing with, I don't know, a six offsuit.
Exactly.
Yeah.
The thing.
That's the important thing of notes, note taking, like this guy, uh, barber, barber, Risa. I, I, I would be forbidding this guy. I would be playing very aggressively back at that guy if he's folding ace king offsuit. Proudly.
Well, I'm looking at one from, um, on G T O Wizard, where ace king starts folding a sliver.
Well, sure.
But, but I had to move his position to cutoff instead of hijack.
I'm not saying you can't make.
I think it's tough to get ace king before, but.
Oh, it is, man.
Not impossible.
It is, but in I C M, sometimes it is a fold to a four bet.
Yeah. Um, I think this is out of line.
This is probably, what did he, what did he do? He had, he, he three bet this guy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like this, okay. I, I think. Yeah.
Has he done anything at this final table? No, not really. It's like in the first hand he plays.
I think pushing at the guy until he pushes back is probably fine, but you know.
Like, um, in micro stakes, at least like twenty-five, thirty big blind stacks, um, I, I tend to like a small free bird, these offsuit aces a lot because people like, for some reason they overfold this or their cutoff range is too wide. Trying to steal the blinds, like a lot of the time they just fold or they cool and fold to a C bet.
Okay.
And then as a big stack, I feel like I, I do want to free bet a lot and I got the blocker, so.
Yeah, it's just that, he did, for me personally, I'd never attack, I never tree bet bluff these kind of stack that because so easy for them to four bet shove. You know?
Also, it's always for them to fold though, like I bet this guy folds. Oh, no.
Oh, no.
He's off.
Um, this is probably good. I, I like a small bet here.
Yeah.
You know, this is exactly why I do it, because that, that happens so often.
All right, so this, I, I'm, I'm getting out of the way of this.
Just, yeah. Especially because you already laid a four bet bluff on this guy. He's gonna be even tighter with his range instruction, three betting you. This is bad news.
Thing is, it could be a four bet bluff here.
He's had his hand burnt is my only thing, like this guy's probably not messing around.
It's being burnt.
Yeah. You've already.
Yeah, he's holding ace king.
If he put it in like four hands ago, do you think he's gonna try to bluff us now?
That's, that's, that's where I'm at too, Nick.
Yeah, we just fold, what, what, ace nine suited.
Hold.
I think, I think it's the same, man. I think like.
He knows, I know. Do you think he thinks we're gonna bluff him twice in a row?
Oh, my God, here we go. Here we go.
I think even in a chart, this is a fold.
But he understands I C M.
Yeah. But the situation has now changed. He's the, he's the second shorty.
Yeah.
Like he's not folding ace king here anymore.
He's also probably not just three betting you with trash either.
Yeah, so let's see what you do, you call. Okay.
I think I like call the, I like call the least of the options.
It's a really thin call, right? It's like zero E P.
Yeah, it's fine.
Or minus E P.
These, um, I C M ranges, that's one of the things that you just don't see a lot of is calling with your, middle of your range. It's like, the hands just want to. The hands just want to push equity typically pre-flop.
So do we want to look at the model for this kind of?
You could, man, like, you could find something like, look at a, look at a six max table and like, look at. Look at twenty, twenty effective or something. I don't know, maybe it was something where you have a little bit more actually, it's probably going to be more relevant.
Cut off small blind?
It just needs to be like a twenty big blind stack, three betting a big guy. So like this.
Started with twenty-seven.
Yeah, do like that forty-four and a fifth, or no, fifteen's too short. You could do the fifty and the twenty maybe.
This one. Forty-four, uh, small blind.
You don't want him in the small blind. That's forty-four in the small blind though.
Yeah, we need to be on the cutoff, right? So. Uh, this one.
Nah.
Uh, that would work, but it's just the, the fifteen's gonna be.
Yeah, four down, there's the, the fifty-four into the twenty-two.
Or a couple up from there. Nine for twenty, yeah, that one was more reason. Oh, that one's nice.
Yeah, that one's good. This one's good.
Yeah, fifty-four and twenty-two.
Will we open from the cutoff?
Yeah.
Uh, cutoff for a small blind.
Small blind.
He's still gonna have a lot of jams, but he will have a, a range, I think. That's not all jamming. No, it's just jamming, it looks like.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It could be a four bet bluff.
So let's see, twenty-two has quite a bit to lose here. There's an eighteen and a, um, twelve.
Yeah, probably bad, right?
Yeah, hard to say.
Which is fine, because there's a shorter stack at Lewis's table as well.
Oh, man.
Yeah, by Sam pressure.
I, I, I thought it would be, uh. A strong four bet, yeah. You want, want to run it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm opening up my ICM miser.
Joey, you need to get the good one.
What?
HRC, man.
Oh, I know. My budget's limited right now.
I hear you.
Uh, how should we call this? A seven suited. Uh, and then file. Computer. Documents. Ace, seven. There it is. Okay, so we call, we get this board. Ah, here comes trouble, Lewis.
Yeah, like, you, you're, you're on the hook now. Like, this is not great. Like, you gotta call.
King eye boards like pretty bad for us, but we've got equity. I don't think we can get away from it.
You can't fall on the flop, man.
Ah, and then, then what? Like, what, like, see, what do we do against a double barrel? Cause we all know he's going to jam the board.
Depends on the turn.
He, he's going to shut down sometimes on.
Oh, my goodness, Lewis, what's he doing?
Polarization error, big polarization error.
I block aces and ace king.
This is, this is, this is honestly like, this is my least favorite of the plays I've seen so far. Like, um, you're only get, you're, you're getting his folds to, you're getting his bluffs to fold. And you're getting his value to call. Like this, this bet does nothing but double him up or let him off the hook.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And you have amazing implied odds against like ace queen, ace jack type hands. Like even a flush on the turn and you get all the, you get all the chips.
Yeah, yeah, flush draws, like, I mean. Yeah, I, I just think, uh, this, this is not what you want to be doing here, especially in position two.
I was just thinking like, if he ever folds, it's a good result, like.
But, but you should be polarizer. You should have like, like king, queen plus and some bluffs.
Cause it's just, well, I was thinking there's so many bad turn cards. I'm blocking ace king, I'm blocking aces. You know, if he ever folds something.
It's reasonable logic. I don't hate that logic, but if you, if you're going to follow that train of thought, why not just push your equity pre-flop?
Hmm, I might have to push in this face, Lewis.
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, yeah, I think, I think. What I was thinking in game was that I'd, I'd shove the wheel aces, but then this one. Might be a cool.
Yeah, yeah, but this here, this here is just, uh. A little bit of a breeze.
Like, yeah, like what I don't like about this looking is like, I'm just like accepting loads of variants, right?
Oh, mountains. Yeah, that's the thing, right? Like when you click the call button pre-flop, you're, you're accepting a very volatile situation.
Like, like my position's so good that like, the, the, this is what I'm confused about. This is why I wanted to go over this, like, like how much aggression I should use as the big step. Like, do I want to be maniac, like a maniac? Or do I want to still?
You need to be cautiously with, what I, what I would advise that you keep the same mentality, like your ideas about ICM.
Oh, yeah.
Sure are good.
It's good.
You just need the correct combos in your hand to do it. If you don't have the correct combo, you can't do it, simple as that.
It's also a game of like jabs, like you're throwing these haymakers, like, uh, yeah, these little like stick and move jabs are kind of what you want to do. Like, just keep testing the waters and if they push back, you know, like, okay, they, they, they get it.
And someone said, you know, we're in position here. You can apply pressure now. You can also apply pressure on the turn. You can wait and see a turn and see what he does.
Yeah, so he probably has just a king or aces, yeah, the worst. Yeah.
Yeah, like. The turn's also kind of like dicey, like even if you call the flop. He's going to just put you in on the turn and then it's like, what do you, what do you do?
Exactly.
That's why, um, I, I would fold or jam this kind of combo pre-flop and versus this guy specifically. I don't think he's, he's messing about, right? I would just fold.
Yeah, I think my strategy would be to jam the wheel, but a six, a seven, a eight, I'm a bit tip. Like, it, it's, it's jamming here, but I'm. I'm a little bit, a little bit more shy.
I must say as well, like, thinking about population, it's very hard to find someone who free bets bluff of this stack size.
Yes.
Yeah.
Especially the lower stakes you are.
Yeah, yeah, cause like, people will do it at like deep stacked or like, you know, fifty plus, forty plus, but. I think at twenty-five, people just like, this is just always the nuts. So like, they don't want to shove for tw- twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then if you think about like your shove pre-flop, it's worth nothing basically. Right? So. Very close hand. But yeah, you could have played it better for sure. I think folding pre-flop. Or folding the flop totally fine. That, in generally, with some three bet bots on a sideboards and kicking airboards, you're supposed to overfold a little bit.
Mm-hmm, but.
So, like, when you, like, open a six off. And you, then you don't open this one.
It's not an open.
Is it not? Hijack.
No, look, 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 look.
Maybe it's, yeah.
Yeah, this is.
That'd be like a, that'd be an out of line three bet if you went for it.
All right, this is fine. I would just bet everything here small, probably. You can maybe even size up a little bit, not with this combo probably though.
Is this a Dexter where you have small bets?
In ICM, everything's going to have small bets.
Yeah. That's fair.
I must admit, in this stakes, I over bet small on the flop just because people, they, they've cooled from the big blind too wide and then they fold too much.
But I'll, I'll agree with you guys. I'll agree with you guys. I'm sure that big bet component is less of a factor, but it. Don't think it disappears.
I agree with you.
Question, to answer your question a little bit better, Louis, it's a polarizing board, right? Like, it's. It, it connects well with a calling range, so we're going to have a lot of checks here. And it's going to make like our value want to front load, which is going to make our bet sizing a little bit larger. So like, I wouldn't be surprised to see like half pot being like a, 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 you know, a popular size here.
Like, say we have a pocket ten. I mean, it's ICM, but I don't think pocket ten is going to want to like bet one point five.
Yeah, but there's two.
Pocket eights as well, like, uh, yeah, I can see, I can see a case for bidding like a few percent pot here.
Bucket eight, one pip above under them, the high card, so it's probably going to want to check a lot and then. We have the club, so the club probably wants us to bet a lot. So it's weird here, like.
I'm just going to put this guy in the box every chance I get. Like, I'm just going to barrel this a hundred percent of the time.
Okay, so, let's see.
That's, this is, so against the big blind here, I think you're going to want to bet this combo small and frequently. Uh, because you're going to be able to be called by a five and a three, you're blocking both continuations with front door and back door. Two coverage and your hand is fairly strong for this board.
I know you're going to plug it in here and it's going to tell you this, Louis. I know it's going to tell you like check or bet large, but like.
It's, it's like check because we're one pin under the nine.
You gotta, you gotta look at the ICM adjusted scenario to really get the true answer.
Yeah, that's a, that's a chippy V post flop setup, right?
It's going to be a bit different.
Sure, but still, like, we can, we can get, like, we have, like, components, like, pocket ten wants to bet big, as we thought. Uh, pocket eight wants to check a little bit more than the hand like pocket seven, because it's bought in one pip under the high card, so like. I know it's ICM, but our, our general logistics don't disappear, right?
Well, the note, like, I mean, the general motion will be the same. It's just, you may see a more distributed small bet size. I mean, I, 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 I truthfully don't know. I haven't looked at this spot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're, we're all just guessing, right? So.
I guess.
Kind of, kind of.
So bucket eight here at chippy V, more of a check. Than anything else, so we can guess that at ICM, it's probably a fun check. You go for a bet, okay. You get punished, oh, with.
See, like, this guy, man.
Like.
I would be tempted, I would be tempted to, to flick in a call and really put him to the test on the turn here.
He just.
I would call here in game probably.
Well, this.
Now I think we've called.
Well, this is, this is honest, right? This is honest, like, it could have been like some shenanigans on the flop, but this is, this is honest, so. I think it's just, yeah, get out of dodge.
If we call the flop, we need to continue here. This is a break.
Dude, that's crazy. How is that a brick?
It's not just that it's a brick, he double barreled.
Okay, so like, what is he check raising? Like, he could definitely be check raising combos that this is not a break to.
Like what? Six, seven?
Six, seven could be in there, five, four could be in there. Like, there, there is a couple combo, well, maybe not a ton of five, four, but ace deuce could be in there, like.
Nine, nine, four of clubs.
Ace nine, four of clubs could be in there, like, he's definitely got stuff that this connects with.
All of these combos you guys said are really good check raise for like fifty big nine, forty big nine? But at twenty, do we, is that how you play your draws? Like, check raise, get it in?
Single raise.
Your nine high clubs, yes.
This is single raise five.
Yep.
The single raise flop.
We check flop.
Check raise on the.
No, we bet flop.
He check raise flop and narrowly.
He could have ten, nine, eight, nine.
Yeah, I think either against a good nine. Or we win.
I fold with a club. I mean, I might get sticky if I didn't have a club.
I'll, I'll put it this way, okay?
Eight are some of his bluffs. He's going to have wheels, but he's got eights in his buffer range too, and then a club is bad on top of that. I think. And I just don't think they're bluffing enough in these spots.
Me, me either.
Oh, while the machine says we need to fold turn everything. Yeah. And that's in chippy B. And the machine says. Okay, pocket eight.
That's his range, right?
Turn, big blind.
That's big lines range, clearly.
Yeah, on the turn he bets. He bets like eight?
Yeah, it was like seven.
He bet half, oh, yeah.
It's going to be closer.
Okay, so pure fold with eights?
Look at five point two.
Sevens can still make a straight. They can suck it out.
Look at five point two while you're still here.
Yeah, sevens got sucked out equity.
That's a turn, so against that one third turn size, we can call. But if he size up just a little bit. Like. Or we're supposed to hold.
This is also like an equilibrium, like if the guy isn't finding the bluffs.
And even a smaller bet, it was folding with a club more than the other ones.
Yeah, you're, you're really grasping.
Yeah, at micro stakes, they definitely struggle to find check raises from the big blind as well.
Right, so I would just, I would. Just give it credit for being more value heavy, probably.
All right, so the, the one thing I wanted to look at is whether or not having a club is good for the EV or not. And it seems that having a club on the turn is better than not having.
Okay, well, I think it's just you're, you're, you're blocking some of his value.
Yeah.
Like, he's looking, he's going to have clubs here a lot, so having an eight is relevant.
So you started with all the chips, Lewis, but you gave yourself a very hard time.
Fine, I mentally reset. I'm in the middle, I'm in the middle stack mentality, mentality now.
Okay.
Okay, so what kind of adjustments do you make, Lewis, when you're in the middle stack mentality? What's that mean for you in this scenario?
Well, no opening a six off from early position, definitely not.
Okay, so you're just tightening up a little bit?
Yeah, I, I want to wait for the other stacks to bust, essentially.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I would tighten up at least one pip.
Or Lewis, it's probably like seven or eight pips. This is a finer table.
It is.
Do we go polar here? I would with this combo. I think ten eight and seven wants to.
Honestly, like, I, this guy shouldn't be limping into you a whole bunch. He should be pretty aggressive for the most part. I'm just not going to give this credit for being a strong hand and I'm going to be very aggressively raising into this guy versus lips.
That's what I would do. The, um, the counter argument is that we're what? We're third or fourth out of six, so like a lot of ICM pressure on us.
Yeah, this is also a, this is also a one gapper, like, I, I prefer to raise ten, seven or ten six here.
Okay. See, I thought this was in the same, yeah, ten, seven, no? We should bet one.
Uh, one's a good bet for sure.
Yeah, one. Oh, whoa, how did we miss that flop?
Yeah, we should have that one.
Oof, I see, you're like a SPR of ten.
The reason I checked is because like, we, we like, we hit the board so hard, it's hard for them to have something. Now, that was my logic.
Yeah.
I don't hate it. I, I, I don't, I don't hate it.
I don't hate that either.
But I, I like to bet one, but that's just me.
I think water checks fine.
And then on the draw heavy board, I just bet big.
Yeah.
I think of that, again, worth remembering, SPR ten on the flop, like, it is going to be hard to get all the money unless he says it's like this.
Oh, he's going after you, Lewis, with this.
Yeah, I definitely like, I, I, I was considering putting this in the, uh, uh, the, uh. The new channel.
Cause this was wild. Yeah, so think about this, think about this for a second. In, in one breath, we're trying to get people off like strong hands by forbidding like trashy aces. And then on the other breath, like, like the other side of the coin is you see this kind of stuff happening. Like. It's just kind of crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this guy's mom called, it's time to go for dinner, so.
I mean, this was luck in about three different scenarios.
All right. Merry Christmas, let's go.
I feel like I had some history with this opponent. He was on my table for like the last few tables or whatever, but I can't. He seemed like fairly aggressive.
Uh-oh.
Um.
Man, I want to, I really want to.
So I could definitely see arguments for getting after a, a bet like this, but. Again, man, this guy's already had his hand burnt once by you and he's shown that he's capable of folding ace king and he's still out there three betting you. Like.
Probably has queens this time, right?
I, I just. I mean, this is a good hand to kind of push equity to get him to fold like his fluffy aces if he's bluffing. But if he's not bluffing, like, getting out of line with a hand like this is just, you know.
The problem is he kind of, after that ace seven hand, I think he kind of knows I'm out of line now.
Yeah.
Uh, there's three guys with ten, twenty-one and thirteen, like, just wait for someone to go.
Well, here's another one I want to ask before we talk about exploits. I'm, I'm curious what we think the equilibrium strategy is here. Um, tons of suited aces.
I think you're going to have suited aces and suited kings going after this guy. I think this is a fine hand, a fine hand to play back at him aggressively.
I would venture to say we only have suited aces playing back. Not these.
It might pick a couple kings, but.
Why would you not want kings? Like, it's a wide range versus a wide range where he should have a lot of trashy aces.
How many more bed bluff do you think you have here?
A lot, a ton. A lot, a ton. There's a, there's a fourteen, a ten, and a twenty-one big blind stack. Like, this guy's got a lot to lose.
Yeah, you're gonna be, all, all your suited aces are gonna have some.
I agree. At equilibrium, we're gonna go pretty hard here.
I think it's gonna be irrationally aggressive.
I think it's worth looking at, so.
Yeah, take a, take a peek, man, like.
Second big stack against middle stack, very short stack.
Just find two, uh, just find two big stacks, find two big stacks where there's a bunch of short stacks, but in late position.
I'm gonna with roughly these stacks, we're fifty-five and he's forty.
So if you find like thirty, forty effective, that's kinda what you're gonna wanna find. So like, there, there's a, no, that's eat thirty equal, that's not gonna work. Um, you might wanna go to the eight max situation just because you're gonna have like more options. Like, I, I think some of these.
I mean, that, that third from the bottom isn't terrible, actually. It had only one short stack, it had a ten big blind stack, but it's not terrible.
Where?
Forty, forty.
You can look at this one, this one's not bad.
Sixty versus forty. It's, I mean, it's not exactly, but it's reasonable.
Forty, forty will probably give you the motion. It's button versus big blind. So first, like, you wanna look at what he's three betting. Like, how much trash does he have in this range? Um, he's got some, not a ton, right? Like, he, he's pretty respectful for the most part. He's pulling from his strong blockers. And as a result, like, we're not really pulling from the kings. Like, it's just aces. Um, if we find, see, this one doesn't have, uh, the risk premium is less here, I think, just because there's only one short stack.
Yeah, I think, I think having two sort of shorts, that makes a big difference.
Two or three guys. That's why you need to go to the eight, I think. You're just gonna have a hard, you're gonna struggle to find a good arrangement. So like. Um. There's, well, that one's not great.
There this. Oh, no, that's not it.
You need to find a couple shorties. So there's a fifty, well, there's the forty-two and the thirty-eight. Yeah, okay, this one will work. So go up, 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 stop. Go down, down, the bottom of the fifty fours. One more, one more, one more that one. So there's a twelve and a. There.
Yeah, that one.
There's an eighteen, a twelve, and a six, and we can be forty-two and he can be thirty-eight. So.
Actually remarkably accurate.
So very similar to what I thought would be the strategy, just.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, Louis. It's just not pulling from the kings.
So nice little fold.
Man, flatting pre with ace ten off feels bad, huh? Like, see a flop with ace ten off?
Feels bad indeed.
Ace nine off, ace eight off.
Ah. See, Lewis. This here could be a thing. What do you guys think?
Well.
You don't like to push this guy around a little bit, but the, this is a combo we could do it with.
Yeah, I think what I was thinking was like, I don't know, I'm third in chips, this, I'm not biggest stack anymore, so then I decided not to.
Yeah, there's a.
Maybe we'll do that on the big blind.
Yeah, there's a seven big blind stack, and this guy's opening eighteen big blinds, except three guys who cover him massively, like, he's just really high on value.
Yeah, he should be, right? Okay. Um, I like this. I like a call.
Yep.
You should be respectful for, against this guy.
Whoa.
Just check call. I don't think there's ever a point where you wanna go aggressively. I would honestly probably just check this river too. Yeah, maybe a bit maybe.
Bet five and get jammed.
Yep. I like how you played that a lot. You were very respectful in a situation. Good awareness. Um, I mean.
I don't want to.
It's probably a good fold, but.
He's tied there.
I don't know. We've seen him open twice, which doesn't count for a lot, but it counts for something.
Yeah, one of those two times he had kings and got half a stack chewed off.
Um.
I would limp here.
Is this a good combo?
What I was thinking is I want some suited connectors, and I think some of the worst suited, two gathers of best to raise with. Like, if this was like jack nine suited, uh, of diamonds, I'd limp, or like ten nine suited, I'd limp.
I truthfully don't think this is bad, Louis. I think this is probably fine.
This is gonna be at the top of the boomerang if you raise, so this is gonna be good.
Uh, it's a bit spicy. I don't, I don't hate it, though. It's a bit, I mean.
What is going on, Lewis?
Yeah, you, you have three other combos that are better to do this with, right? If you have blubs, diamonds, or spades. This is the only one that I don't think this is a great play.
If he's over folding, I think it's fine. That's a big.
Like, if he cools, I shut completely down.
But if you choose the other three combos, when you turn of, of the flush draw, you have equity to continue. You the block, but here you just don't have any ability to continue the block.
So pre five fifty fifty, but the raise, the raise is.
I would, I would just call it an expansion. Like, if you have a justification.
I know, I know.
If you have a justification, it's fine. It's, it's definitely.
Really like it overpart.
It's, it's.
Especially, oh, yeah.
Like I rolled a one.
Look at this, Lewis. You just need one, one suit with the back door. That's all you need. It's a good thing. You have the right idea. Just the wrong combo. So that's, that seems to be your biggest issue right now. You have the right ideas and the wrong combos. You just need a spade, diamond, or club, and this is very good.
I think Tim's flipping a coin, not rolling a dice.
Yikes, man. This is, this is, this is, this has gotten really hairy really quick.
Uh, check.
Oh, my gosh.
Check, check.
That, the nine's not horrible, like, it, it should shut down the action. I don't like this at all.
Yeah, this, this is a marginal made hand, like.
You, you, you're asking to get raised, like, you're inviting bluffs when you, when you put this little bit out there.
Alright.
Wait, if I get.
And like realistically, if we're value betting, yeah, we're trying to get called by seven X and deuce X. Ish.
It's very thin. I think it's.
I mean, you could say the same thing, like, what if you get called by ace high, like, or, you know, whatever. It's just like.
You're, you're.
Isn't this better than like checking them facing a bigger bet? But then I guess we just fold, right?
Yeah.
I don't. This is just, this is just a check, I think. Even in chippy, like, this is. A bit much.
Okay. Ah, got value.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't be, don't be so results oriented.
Yeah, very thin.
Louis is just out here sorrying people, so.
I like this. That's a good bet. Uh, yeah, this is good.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, probably a bit dicey with this guy. He's very deep. I would just call here.
Need the suited version.
Yeah, and like, because you're so deep, you're like fifty effective, I think you probably wanna be raising a bit larger too, but, you know.
I mean, I don't, I, I don't mind the rage versus button.
You guys are also the, the big stacks. You guys just don't wanna play big pots against each other.
Yeah, you're not really.
Notably, one of them, one of them wants to play against the other one less than the other, you know? That's the, the key thing here.
But it's not good for either of them.
True.
Why did I check? For some reason, I thought this was a better board for the bottom. But the plan was to check raise.
Uh, see, this is, this is not a great check raise spot either. Like, it, it's, it's again, like, what, what, if you check raise this, what are you hoping? He, what are you hoping to play a giant pot with?
Like a worse jack.
You think he's just gonna punt the tournament off with queen jack here? For a hundred big blinds? You think that's the hand he's gonna put it out there with?
Yeah.
See, that's, that's why it gets kind of like dicey real quick.
It is checking most of the time, though.
I, yeah, I think, especially in ICM, you can check just to pot control. Cause in I, ICM, you're really not gonna be able to get three streets. Big stack against big stack and still be comfortable.
Not with this hand.
Yeah, he's gonna have a lot of continuations with the jack and the eight having a flush draw, a straight draw between them.
Yeah, little trick for you, Lewis. When you play a three bet pot as the aggressor and the flush completes. It's usually very good for your opponent and not so good for you. It's usually not a spot where you're gonna lead a lot.
I think I was thinking he better flush draw, but maybe not in ICM. I think you tend to check your draws more in ICM.
Yeah.
Especially in three bet pots, you wanna realize equity.
Yeah, your good draws, he's gonna check.
I think, like, that's kind of protection as well for over cards.
You could probably push at this guy, I think. I, I wouldn't hate like even a, a jam here sometimes, but jam's a bit much. I would just raise, I think.
Jam's fine.
Yeah, it probably is.
Calling is not good at all.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of calling either.
Cause you open, you let this guy push, you're in the sandwich, you're gonna be out.
Is this a zero percent cool spot?
I think I would like, like, this is just a fold, because in general at ICM, when you have a nine in your hand, you're playing in slate position. You're blocking all of the, the bottom of his range.
You might be right, Louis.
Not blocking bottom of the.
You, you have an ace, you have an ace block though, which is gonna make you wanna three bet.
You are, because the button's not, the button's not gonna be opening all suit eights with ICM pressure.
You, you can look at this range. There's, there's gonna, there's gonna be two big stacks, two little stacks. There's gonna be a lot of these scenarios on, uh, PFA. You can look at this.
I think this is actually a jam.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm kinda with that too, to be honest. You can look at this very easily, cause there's gonna be a lot of these. Well, then look at the spot, man.
Okay.
If he jumped, he need to call us only with, I don't know, wins plus.
Four max, there should be plenty of like two big, two shorts.
Big, big, short, short.
Two bigs, two shorts.
Thank you, Gala.
You're welcome. I'm just trying to help. Here, what about that forty-two, twenty-two, fifty-four, thirty-two? Small blind is forty-two, but, uh, the button's thirty-two. That's a little deep. Try the one. Try the one above it, uh, the fifty-four, twenty-two. This is a good one, I think. It's a little different, but I think it'll get the idea across.
Bit, no, because we would do, like, you'd be jamming into the, the big stack.
Well, you're jamming into the big stack in this other one, aren't you? No?
Uh, shorter stack and a big blind. The button's got more than a big blind.
Yeah, that's it. You're, you're, you're right, you're right. Forty-two, thirty-two, this is it. So where are you pulling from?
Let's open, we are.
Sounds like you're, sounds like you're dying.
Uh, that was not funny. Uh, so. This here.
Looks like Louis was right, just a fold.
Just a fold.
You see, like, how it's kind of mixing these combos, how it's mixing these combos? Like, you're, you're not wanting to call with these, these, all, these offsuit ones, though. They just don't, you want the extra equity, so it's like, three betting's probably okay, folding's good. Calling is the least attractive of the options.
Um, I got, I got a question, like, as the big staff against shorter stacks, like, I wanna, you wanna cool sometimes, right? So you can push around post flop, is that a thing?
What kind of calls, what kind of calls do you see on this, this chart?
It seems like suited stuff, like, it's not like other sports, like, like, when it's the shortest stack versus big stack, there tends to be like no calls whatsoever, but when you cover, you get to cool more, right?
If you're, if you're opting into an out of position situation, you're, you're gonna need the additional equity of the suited combos, really, generally.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, but like, cause like, what I'm thinking as a big stack, you do cool sometimes. You don't just play free bet or fold strategy, right?
Well, yeah, not, no, but like, if you, you can look here and see, it's like by far the dominant strategy. If you're gonna simplify your life.
So one of the.
Can you copy the, or a chat to the chat? I will just summarize it. Just curious.
What was that?
One of the problems as the small blind is that you really wanna three bet from your offsuit side. Because you do not want to give the big blind the price to come along with the suited hands that have extra equity. And have the same value as the combos you're gonna choose. So.
I mean, it's a good way to look at it.
The, the big one's gonna be incentivized to come along with ace nine suited when you flat ace nine offsuit, and he just has better equity. In the hand against you with the same combo in position against you.
Mm-hmm, yeah, seems reasonable.
So, the hand is in the chat.
Thanks. If this is just a, not a Kyo tournament.
Yeah, standard.
Turbo or regal.
Oh, this is a standard.
Yeah, it's timid.
Okay.
Big four.
Poker stars one, okay.
This is where dreams are born, the big forty, four forty on poker stars.
Yeah.
Better where they die, one of these.
Focus dolls is soft. It is soft. I don't care what people say. It is a very soft side.
Lewis, what the hell are you doing, man? Lewis, what is this?
What do you do? Bet one point eight?
Oh, he.
He, why would you call here? I don't get it. It's from, I don't get it. Tell me, Lewis.
I don't know, like, what deuces does he have? Like, I don't really have any either, but, I don't know. It, it's a small bet. I got over cards.
Yeah, you have two overs to meet MDF. You're gonna call a lot of ace high.
Are you gonna agree to beat?
You know, diamond.
Call with the nine of diamonds here, rated the ace of diamonds.
I mean, honestly, the call's whatever, like, you're, you're gonna be. It, it, it's really whatever for me, like, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and say it's like he's punting, but. Um, are you really gonna be yielding a lot of, uh, value from a call like this in the long run? In a scenario where, you know, it's gonna get expensive really quick? Probably not.
Honestly, like, I think there's value here in, cause of the ice, like, cause of the, the, the stack under him, like. He's, might just be like, you know, betting and just shutting down on a board like this.
Yeah.
Like, if he's got like king high, he's gonna bet small and then just shut down, right?
So.
Like, like a decent amount of the time, and then we're good.
I'll throw the logic back at you. If you wanna, if you wanna play ball with him post flop like this, why not just three bet it pre flop is the question I'll just pose again.
I just didn't think this was the combo. I thought like it might be like ace five, ace six, ace, ace seven off, and then the suited wheels. And then maybe some suited kings, like king six, king seven. That's what, that's what I was like, think it's the range.
I think if you had one diamond, Lewis, you could, you could, you, if you had one diamond in your hand on this deck, you have a lot of options. But without the diamond, it's very tough.
Yeah, I would, uh, I would just start thinking more in the terms of like, in these scenarios, just think in terms of blockers, really, like. You don't wanna, like, the least attractive combos are the ones that kind of like interact with the cards that you want him to fold. And then like, obviously, the attractive ones are the ones that block the best hands. So like, you're really gonna be struggling to go wrong with just picking an ace a lot of the time. But, yeah, you know. It's fine. For sure.
It was a bottom raise.
Was it button raised?
Deuce, deuce eight. It's, yeah, you gotta go with the cutoff, cause it's always gonna wanna jam against the button.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. So call and fold. And board is deuce, deuce.
Deuce eight with a flush draw.
Deuce. Deuce eight. Eight of diamonds, right? And then small blind check. Cut off bets two.
Yeah.
What do we do with that ace nine? No diamond. Okay. Thing is, it's our best A side. Man, let's look at the E V. The E V of calling without the diamond versus the E V of calling with a diamond. It's a lot better with a diamond.
Oh, for sure. Uh, I mean, I don't think anyone's disputing that.
Yeah. And then with the diamond, you even have big, big raises, whereas without the diamond, you don't really.
And the one thing I would say to this is like, if the E V is very marginal continuing here, while we are the big stack. We still are experiencing a risk premium here, playing a pot with this guy, which is going to correct our range probably like E from a E V standpoint. I don't know, five, ten percent or something. So like, if if you're making a little in chippy V, you're likely not making anything in an I C M.
Yeah.
Adjusted spot.
Yeah, and that's.
Yeah, it's probably negative in I C M if it's barely breaking even in chippy V.
That's why this is, this is a good hand to play with, but you want the the diamond for just a better, more choice, just. Higher E V options.
So Lewis, do you have a checking range here with some of these lower a six?
How about that board?
No, not this board. This board's so much better for me.
If you're gonna mix it one, this is probably a fine one to do it, but I I agree. I just, I honestly, I just kind of range spent these spots.
I like, they don't have queens, they don't have aces, they they may not, they may have ace queen, but they may free bet that, so like. Why I have all those hands? So I wanna bet a lot for a small side. Cause I got the nut advantage.
Yeah, but you're an I C M too, though. I think that that leans this hand to checking more than chippy V.
This, this is just a range bad board spot.
Okay, not much checking, and there's not much mixing, right? I thought it would mix a little bit more often than that. But you do wanna have a sliver of a checking strategy. And one thing you wanna consider here, Lewis, is that when you check back on these kind of boards. This Barbie, Barbo Lisa might as well lose it and start to bet his queens, you know? But there's a bit of merit in checking sometimes with top pair here.
Especially top pair with weak kicker.
But this is not a defender at I C M.
No, it's not.
What, what, what is, like, ten eight?
You wanna be able to make a str- uh, a straight, like, your your one gappers will probably be fine, but um.
Yeah, ten, seven. Ten six might be borderline.
You can honestly look at this. Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
If you fold this at chippy V, it's not a big mistake.
Yeah. Okay, good lead. I love it.
Yes.
Hi, Bapo.
Yeah, welcome.
Memories. Ooh, punished.
I would bet one.
Yeah, this is a spot where we wanna bet a lot, right? Range that's small.
One, one.
Wait, so, oh, a spot I think I'm weak at is button versus big button. So I wanna like, well, I I, what sort of, cause it's both wide ranges. I find it quite difficult. Like, if I was like, early position and big blind cooled, I would range bet, but I think on button, don't you wanna, button versus big blind, you wanna check more?
Why? Why would you wanna check more when he has more trash in his range?
Like, I was just thinking if there is a check combo, this would be a good one, because it's like, it's ace high, there's, you know, I don't have much interaction with the board.
In general, when you're uh, button, big blind, you're in position, you get a monologue on board, you're just gonna range that small.
Yeah.
The smaller you range that, the more you can, you can, you can bet everything.
It's gonna be hard, even if he just bet one, it's gonna be hard for him to find enough combos to keep going.
Yeah, and betting one is really, betting one is really strong here, because people don't play well against the one. They don't know, should they continue? Like, if they have a diamond, it's not gonna be tough, right? But if they have an ace high with nothing, no, no diamond, no interaction. Against your one big blind, it's close whether they're, they should continue or not, right? They they probably overfold to your one big mind or.
Well, they shouldn't have a lot of ace high, but yeah, your your point stands. I agree.
Whereas now, you see, just like.
You kind of give the pot away. Like, you're gonna have to either make like pretty thin continues where he has the uh.
Yeah.
The advantage here and like, like, what do you do now? Like, you just have to get out of the way.
I didn't like that call in the turn.
Yeah.
So you went from a spot where you win a small pot very, very frequently to a spot where like.
You lose a medium.
Win a larger pot. Yeah, you lose a medium pot very frequently.
Yeah, or nothing, just because you didn't see that.
Uh, you could probably attack this guy at some frequency. I think um, from the big blind, though, you wanna more from the offsuit stuff.
Wanna push?
You could push into this guy, I think.
I like it.
He's been three betting you a lot. I think I would, I would tighten up against this person. In the big mind.
Yeah, maybe.
It seems like he's three betting you almost every time you raise.
Also, if he's around, it's only because of you, because of that A seven hand. He should be gone, you know? A long time ago, but you like it rough and tough, Lewis.
He's a freeloader.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make an entertaining ad history.
Oh, my goodness.
Boring, but who likes a story where the guy's just winning the whole time?
I'm starting, starting with the guy. He's starting with him.
Playing with your food, right, Louis?
Yep.
So maybe I trade back here a little bit.
It's probably fine sometimes.
A good check raise?
No, you gotta raise that now.
The reason I could raise is because I was thinking a raise at the time, then I'm like, the board's so dry.
Well, you.
Don't forget about that shit.
Where's Jack? How is he ever gonna get away from Queen Jack here, you know? Now it's just like, ew, see, you were gonna, you had the, he was never gonna fold, you know?
Yeah, you're.
Ten big blinds more here, I think.
Yeah, I think I was like thinking like, I don't know, what's my bluffs? Like, I guess it's just like four, seven, four.
Well, you'll, you'll have backdoor flush draws.
Like, maybe like king, queen, diamonds.
King, queen, diamonds, hearts, clubs.
Here, you're, you have like a king, five of, of uh, diamond, king, five of heart, king, five of the clubs, you know? High-low combos that get better kings to fold, and then if you turn a king, it's clean. So high-low combos like that, like wheels, like ace five, ace five of clubs, ace five of hearts. So things I can make this trade or flush and get better combo to fold.
Queen ten and queen nine of the suits.
Yeah. So there's a lot you can check raise here, and to check raise bluff, you need to check raise a lot every time with this kind of hand, I think. Is this a jam? I would jam here.
Yeah, I like jamming. At some frequency, like you can raise. I don't, I don't really like limping any aces here.
Yeah, you're right.
I think you wanna be splitting your range between jams and uh, raises with all your aces into this stack.
A lot of jamming, I think, with a six hands.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
I'm gonna guess zero limbs.
So, one trick for you, Lewis, okay? Whenever you have a very strong hand like this. And the S P R is small, like this, like S P R is like four here, right? So at S P R four, when you have a very strong hand, you don't check rates. But if you have a hand like this, at S P R four, you always check rates. Top pair, top kicker, you always check raise, but two pair type events, just too strong. Like, if you have a set of six here. You would just, you're not gonna fold, but you're not gonna push. You you wanna keep the fish on the line. So you don't really get to raise her, I think.
Yeah, I think the reason I raised is because it's like the ace is just way better for me than him, because he probably shot a lot of his aces. Actually, maybe, I don't know.
Sup, everybody?
I like. Oh, look who it is. I like the flop bet there. Um, I would like a, yeah, I was gonna say like small to medium, seems good. And now I just put them all in.
Yeah, sorry, I slipped so late.
This is kind of unlucky, but, yeah. Uh, folds, gotta folds.
Now there's three even stacks for the top three, pretty much.
Yeah, you gotta have to be pretty respectful for a little bit. Ooh, that's a fold. It's kind of interesting if uh, well, I think it's still a fold, even if uh, the big blind doesn't go along with it. It's gotta be close, right?
I thought it was an easy fold at the time, just because I can ladder off.
Well, so like, let's say.
Guy folds and it's back.
And I'd say the big blind folds. This is a tough decision.
I think it's a theory call.
You're not really, because you're already ahead, and like, it's not ace queen, right? Say it's Jack.
It's an easy. I think it's.
Ace king is a tough decision here. Ace king is a snap.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're going with ace king.
Come on, the church.
Uh, he came off probably fold.
Think I like it, because you wanna.
I was gonna say. Yeah, I was gonna say, honestly, like, uh, some of these middling pairs do a lot of this, and I don't do enough of this in my game. It's probably fine.
I do, I, that's the reason I limp. The reason I limp is because of the high risk premium, getting in a big pot against this guy. That's why I limp.
Hey, there you go. No, you were, you were playing perfect un- until here.
I think you probably just play call. What did he bet? What happened?
Yeah, we call, and then we went for a lead.
Oh, I don't like the lead at all in the turn.
I I thought, I thought the lead was good, because I feel like I'd have more straights from limp cooling.
So like, again, like, the uh, I I was saying this the other day, the the leading strategy typically comes from like an equity shift. And like, does this seven like give you strong hands that he doesn't have?
Again, it's the right.
He probably doesn't have Jack nine, he pre-checks.
Why, why on earth?
Why does he have not have Jack nine? It's blind versus blind.
I I think if he has Ja- Jack nine suited, if I have Jack nine suited, I probably just check mine with the big risk premium and Jack nine off, I check mine.
When there's I C M pressure, I raise almost every, any two cards if the small blind limps.
Yeah, he he definitely can have Jack nine here, um. He's gonna have like, he could have sets here. He's got all of the strong hands. Um, he's got overpairs here. There's definitely not enough shift in the equity to pop out a big boy lead, but you know. I I I get where you're coming from with it. I just think you're gonna be able to capture way more chips. I mean, this guy just hands you the, hands you the pot, like, I'm not even like stoked about putting all the chips in at this point.
I would just call.
I thought, I thought my set in this blind, the blind situation is way too strong, just to cool. Especially.
Oh, wow. So there you go. Yeah, I mean, he had a pretty big hand, but like.
You you think cool? Not, 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 not cool win?
Definitely just call here, because if he ever has any bluffs, you're getting rid of everything.
Well, yeah, and if he's a disciplined player also, like, you're, you're giving him the out card. Like, if you lead and jam, and he's got like an overpair here on a really coordinated board that's really good for a calling range. If there's ever a time for him to get the hell out of Dodge, you just handed him like, you know.
The keys of the kingdom, yeah.
Yeah, the way out.
Yeah.
But but I think pe- people can't make big folds blind, be blind in, in, in this state. I don't know, I, I, I think, I think that, does, does everyone think it's a bad jam?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think you're like making a huge mistake, like, in the, in the long run, you're still gonna be making chips here. I'm just saying like, it's just suboptimal in the long run, probably.
Here's a way I think about it. You have, um, you have a couple of different types of of very strong hands. You have straights, you have sets, you have two pairs, let's say. Um, you don't really have overpairs. Um, what, which, like, you could take a couple of these and put them in aggressive lines and a couple of them, put them in passive lines. Uh, a thing I've noticed is that in very deep stack situations, the sets tend to take the aggressive line more. It's like, you know, hundred big blinds effective, um, because they can put in a big checkers and flop, put in the big rage on the turn, overbet hundred and thirty percent on the river and get called by words. Uh, whereas here, I feel like solvers often like to use the set to um, to slow play a bit and protect their checking range. And the two pairs are a little bit more worried about getting counterfeited here, for example, against kings, right? Which like eights can't get counterfeited. You can only get two out of it. Um, but like your ten eight maybe is interested in like putting pressure on like a combo draw that has a lot of equity, but maybe you can get a fold from. Or get him to call it off with kings where you're ahead, but you're still kind of vulnerable.
And another additional thing about this hand, once his raise makes the S P R less than one, you can just call. Because he's gonna, about half of the time, he's still gonna put the rest of the chips in on the river.
Yep. Yeah, so I s- I used to play exactly how you played this hand, and what I started doing a lot more is more of the checking, calling, checking, raising. Instead of, you know, shoving the chips in, because I used to shove them in like, fuck yeah, I'm gonna win the hand, and then they fold. I'm like, damn, I just lost. So I started slow playing things a lot more than I used to, and it's, it's actually helped a good bit.
And I don't even know if like I would call it even slow playing. It's just like, you're, you're targeting his bluffs instead of his value in a lot of ways. Like, if, if his range is just kind of more like draw heavy or bluff heavy in some scenarios. Like, you're, you're just gonna be better served with the very top of your range to target that.
No, I. I was good. There's an old, going back, go back to the last hand.
Yeah, go back to that one.
There's a very old strategy from sitting goes that you're in a spot now. I would fold this and not let the big blind bust, because as long as the big blind's in there, you could pick on the other two stacks relentlessly.
Yeah, that's a bit of a thing.
I think it's kind of whatever.
I like.
Getting, Jesus.
So that's how you win tournament.
No joke.
Quad, boat, quad, boat.
No joke, that's insane. I'm going.
How do you think you win a thousand person?
Yeah, I shot here also.
Yes, it's a mandatory jam.
I think you're, you're, you're tilting uh, the, the peanut gallery here, Louis, with all.
Here, I think here we can almost stay into jam here.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can jam it. I agree. And you, uh, Bingam.
Yeah, you are on fire right here, Jesus.
Jamming's probably alright.
Oh, my God.
Wait. Oh, yeah, I I wanna fold this. I don't, I don't wanna play this hand.
With that hand?
You think, you think I fold, right?
Nah, nah, you don't have any, when you're, when you have this big of a stack, you don't have any phones.
I mean, the big stack doesn't matter. We're just, we're just twenty effective. Do you beat it a hundred percent twenty effective?
Uh, this is probably okay. I I I would, um, if I was gonna fold an ace, I might fold this one sometimes, but yeah, it's whatever. I think it's fine. I think it's good.
A little bit flatter dependent.
Alright. That tournament, this is how Lewis took down the four forty on PokerStars and made six.
Congrats.
Yeah, man, I mean, you had some fucking fire hands on that final table, dude. Nothing, nothing. Nothing, nothing out of extraordinary, I think.
What about like general feedback then? If I can take like two or three things away for my next final table?
I think on many spots, Lewis, you have the right, you know, like the ICM pressure and.
Thank you, Mike.
But you got the wrong combo in your hand, Lewis.
Uh, you, you're good with the aggression for sure. I think you just need to control your aggression and, and, and you know, like. A little more precision with it in some spots and be like. Be maybe, uh, I guess the idea would be a, a little more balanced and respectful in some spots because it's just like. There was a couple of spots you were just, oh, and your calling range. Uh, I think in like ICM spots. I, I would really. Uh, steer, not steer clear, but I, I would. Do less calling, especially out of position.
Yeah, you're very sticky on some spots.
And maybe, maybe play uh.
Low equity hands.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe be a little less stick with you, sticky with the margins. Like, you know, you, you don't have to meet. You're not supposed to meet MDF in um, these high, you know, equity spots like this. But uh, I, I, I think what you did good is you do have like, um, the idea of the general, the general motion. Of like how to adjust your game in these spots. Like the framework is there.
Yeah, you just need the combo to allow you to fire basically. Like suited aces, suited kings instead of offsuit aces.
Or like in that one spot we saw with, with diamonds on the board, like check raising with a single diamond is great.
Yeah, exactly. You wanna base your, your strategy on the suit for flush draw boards, right?
Yeah, you play the big stack. Well, I'd be curious to see like maybe. You, you played a, you played a little medium stack, but like maybe how you adjust with a uh, where, where you're, you know, not um. The big stack the entire time. Maybe short uh.
Then Lewis, you're not gonna win all the hands you play. You need to understand that and accept that. So if you make like a second pair on a spot, you, you got second pair, you know? You don't, you, you don't put the guy in with second pair just because. It's pressure, pressure, pressure all the time. You need to. Play according to your cards and play according to your holding a little bit, you know? Yeah, what, what he just said is something I had to realize the hard way. I was all the time. Playing second pair and third pair thinking I had such a great hand and. I'd get to where I was just like, okay, I'll just keep calling them down and I kept losing chips. So finally. I've gotten really picky on some of the hands I play. If I don't, if it doesn't feel right and everything's telling me just to get out and then even, you know. The data tells you get out, I'm out, man. I've folded some crazy hands. People are like, oh my god, why would you fold that? It's just. You can tell, I mean, the way they're betting and then based on the strategy and everything, you just, sometimes you have to get out with some of the better hands. Alright, so thanks a lot, everybody for joining.